Stand and join me with a pledge to comply. Okay, next item on the agenda is I need someone to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Gary? Kate, second.
I'm sorry, just point of order, are we keeping? Seven point one?
We are.
Okay.
Yeah.
You said it.
It's an update.
Okay.
It's an update. Yeah, seven point one, simply an update. Yeah. Yeah. So Gary first, Kate second, all in favor? Okay, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent, Ms. Swan, in regard to some board recognition tonight.
Yeah, so we have some exciting board recognitions. We're going to start with our student athletes. I asked Miss Pacito to go to the podium. And while she's moving to the podium, just a recognition of a wonderful athletic awards ceremony the other night. It felt really nice to be able to participate in person like that. And I really enjoyed the students who helped to facilitate that evening. That was really a wonderful opportunity to have that be led by them. So Jen, I'll let you introduce your students who are with us tonight.
So thank you so much, Ms. Swan. And I'd just like to thank more education again for the opportunity to highlight the accomplishments of our student athletes. In addition to the accomplishments, you're going to hear about their talents and their specific sports. I am very proud to share that each of our spring sports received the New York State Public High School Athletic Association's Scout Athlete Recognition this spring. And it's just a continued testimony, not only to the high standards that our coaches hold, the work ethic of our students, but also the support of our teachers and educators and our whole community. So I'm very, very proud of that. And we truly appreciate the opportunity to share this with you tonight. So tonight, we will be recognizing our boys golf team and members from our track and field team. I'm incredibly honored to share their accomplishments with you tonight. And we are going to start with our track and field Rangers. I'm ready to pick out the crowd. So girls, you can come on up. Coach. So Coach Marasco and our four by four hundred relays with us tonight. They're actually back-to-back sectional champions of the four by four hundred. They claimed that title in the winter and in the spring. And they ran the four by four hundred in the spring in four minutes and eleven seconds. Which would be a clue of how long it did me to go once. And we also had Emily Sugar, who was Monroe County champion and sectional champion in the long drop. So I will welcome Coach Marasco up to the stage.
Thank you for taking the time to honor all the athletes in the spring. We have our senior, who is a leader and has been for many times and has accomplished a great many things. We can probably be here for the rest of the board meeting, but she's been here several times and we're super proud of her. And Emma Mahoney, Jenna Hat Setler, and Nina. This is their first trip here, but they are all very young. They're sophomores. So I think it'll be the first of many more trips from them. We're just super proud of all they do on and off the field, but together to run the four hundred takes a special person. And we got four special people. So and their accomplishments, obviously, are their commitment and their desire to run this crazy event. So I appreciate it and we're proud of them.
I just wanted to say one thing. Michelle Obama's father used to say to her, you are smart, you are strong, and you are fast. And that is certainly true of the four of you. So congratulations.
Next, I would like to welcome up Coach Moon and our boys golf team. So this season, our boys golf team claims the Monroe County co-division champion this year, earning another banner for the program. So I will welcome up Coach Moon to say a word.
Thank you. Yeah, we had a very successful year this year. And part of these young men right here. We'll start here. This is Rodney Vaduka. We call him Danny Noonan. Player number four for us today, did a great job. This is Joe Baggano. We call him Clyde Zella. He was our most improved player this year and really, really put us over the hump. Next, we have our youngster, Sam Rikus, seventh grader. Same qualified for the sectionals this year. Very, very difficult thing to do in boys golf. We, especially our Rangers, have not had a player on the boys' side make the sectional since Marcy Sutter, which I think was
Two thousand and eight, maybe?
Yeah. God, well done, seventh grader. We call him Wall Street. Does his own business, of course. We had Joe Kegler, we call him Kegs, senior. Man of outstanding quality. He will be heading to the Marines in September. And last but certainly not least, we have Sean Zazo, another senior, we call him Little Google. Really, here, his last two years, he's just done an outstanding job for us. Should be very proud of his accomplishments. They all should be. They did a great job. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Moon. Mr. Moon. Wouldn't give you a hundred dollar stipend for the nicknames, okay? We're giving you a hundred dollar stipend just for the nicknames.
Thank you.
And that concludes my portion of the evening. So again, I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. We have incredible student athletes. And it's just such an honor to be able to share their accomplishments with you. So I truly appreciate it. And I look forward to definitely be a member. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is privilege of the floor during this. Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
I'd like to ask Sean McCabe and Ken Olson to come to the podium. As they're coming to the podium, I was in Ken's office the other day. I didn't say anything, but we were just looking at some videotape. And I happen to really love the picture in his office of all the students who dressed up like him for Halloween. With their mustaches. And I just thought to myself, oh, there it is. What a wonderful testimony to Ken's impact in our school district. And so I asked Sean if he would share some thoughts of Ken.
Thank you. And I thank you, Kristen. I'm honored to be able to do this. So Ty was making fun of me, but I have everything written down, so I'm just going to read what I wrote. So it's my great honor, pleasure to be able to say a few words about Ken Olson tonight. After Ken retired from the Agnes Police Department, he continued to serve Spencerport community as a security guard at the high school. Ken was just so, so much more than just a security guard. He truly was one of the most respected, valued, and beloved members of our staff during eighteen years he worked at the high school. I truly mean that. Students gravitated to Ken. We're always asking him for advice as young adults, and Ken was always willing to give them honest answers. I think that is why so many kids respected him. He was an authority figure they respected, but who they could also talk to and connect with. He could often be seen counseling, talking to some of our most challenging students. And the students would listen to him and really take what he had to say to heart. Only one need to look at the picture, you know, being displayed right now to see this impact on our students. This was a group of seniors about seven years ago, I think they were Cory seniors during Halloween. And this was done as a sign of the greatest amount of respect to Ken. I think one of my most special memories I'll have at Ken is his work with one of our 1211 students. Who had very significant, had very significant cognitive challenges. This young man was in such awe of Ken and just, he was an awesome, is an awesome young man. So Ken bought him his own security shirt. And Ken and the young man would walk the hallways together during the morning, every morning, prior to the start of school from seven to seven twenty. And Ken had deputized him as his assistant security guard. And that young man was so happy and proud as he walked with Ken. Again, that's one of my favorite memories in my eighteen years working with Ken. As an inexperienced AP and then as an inexperienced principal, Ken was awesome, was someone I would often turn to for advice. And he always gave me honest and straightforward advice, which we truly appreciated. He was someone as an administrative team, both when Ty was principal and I am, me as principal, was that was an integral part of our team. And so Ken will truly be missed next year and in years to come, without a doubt. And the high school will miss Ken. He did one effective job keeping our students and staff safe. And we'll always be grateful to him for that. So I wish him all the best in his retirement and on his boat. Be careful out there on the lake. And he certainly has earned his retirement and has done a wonderful job for us. So Ken, congratulations. You're welcome.
And Ken, thank you for your years of service and dedication to our community. I know I've known you ever since the kids were little, playing sports together. And everything that Sean says is to the heart and to the truth. And we can't thank you enough for all that you have done here in our, in our learning community in Spencerport. So once again, on behalf of the board, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome. Working here with the people that I did, it made it easy to do that job.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay, moving right along, our next segment is privilege of the floor. During this time, members of the public may address the board. Remarks should be limited to two to five minutes. The board will listen to input but not respond, except to refer any specific concerns to the superintendent for follow-up. Questions should be answered within a week, if possible. Speakers will give their name, address, and phone number. The clerk will record this. So Mr. Bardine?
My name is Tom Bardine. And we live at six Ridge Village Drive, Spencerport, New York. My phone number is five eight five four one four nine nine eight seven. It's pretty straightforward, simple question, and maybe it's a little bit intricate to a location. If I can find it or send me back and know where it is. I'd like to please advise the total number of ballots cast in the 2022 school board election. I'm not interested in the number of votes for each candidate. I understand that, I know what they are, they're close. I'd like to know the total number of ballots that were cast in Spencerport school district. You haven't written it. It sounds like it's my question. Also, I cannot really respond to the second part of my second question, six, seven. I had to ask what the values are. And I received a text from you that explained why, why I'm finding that from Marcy. Where to find those values. And the rest, it's a whole other subject we'll talk about later, but I'd like to ask if you could, the second part of that question on six, seven. What are the values based on? Please answer this part of my question. Also, the first question they asked, and I understand when I went back and looked at it, it's kind of ambiguous, but I asked you about American United States citizenship versus global citizenship. And I guess your response on how you couldn't get into that. So I'd like to be more simple and more direct. I just simply like to ask you, is it a goal of our education system to graduate students who become United States of America citizens? And that's it. If you want the time tonight, appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. You have a great evening. Okay, our next privilege of this, privilege of the floor speaker is Thomas Weaver. Thank you, Thomas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Spencerport School Board. My name is TJ Weaver. Address forty-five Ricciardi Drive, Rochester, New York. Five eight five seven four six zero four three four. I'm a former student of Spencerport Schools. I worked at Spencerport Schools for thirteen years. And I have two siblings currently attending Spencerport High School. I'm here today because of the previous school board meeting. There was some discussion about removing the minimum suspension penalties for drug use and violent behavior from the Spencerport School Code of Conduct. And I came here to share my opinion about that matter as a member of the Spencerport community. I think that the prevalence of vaping and actual fighting, fist fighting in Spencerport schools, especially the high school, specifically the high school, is incredibly disconcerting. And that removing the minimum suspension penalties for drug use and, and violent behavior isn't going to help in the least. Every student at Spencerport Schools has a right to a safe and drug-free learning environment. And if that means giving kids who are starting fights and are bringing drugs on the campus significant suspensions or expulsions, then so be it. As a result, it's my opinion that the minimum suspension for penalties should not be removed from the code of conduct. Going into becoming a school year, I have faith that all of you on the board and in the administration will do everything in your power to remove vaping and violence from Spencerport High School and establish a safe, positive drug-free learning environment. Thank you all and have an amazing night.
Thank you, TJ. Thank you so much. Okay, our next item is our consent agenda. And hopefully everyone had an opportunity to review those materials. But I need at this point someone to make a motion to approve our consent agenda along with the classified addendum and the certificated addendum.
To approve the consent agenda with the certificated addendum and the classified.
Thanks, Kate. Second. All in favor?
I have to abstain.
Thank you. So six, oh, thank you, Gary. Okay, our next item is Board of Education reports. Like, I've got just three quick items here. Like Jen Pacito just got done saying, I attended the athletic awards ceremony last week. And what an outstanding ceremony that was. And the two students that she had helped facilitate that, I really liked that touch to have the kids involved in facilitating that ceremony with her. Unfortunately, I had to leave a few minutes early due to the fact I had an award ceremony down at Churchville to attend and present an award myself. I'd like to thank all of you that were available to help Parker with the fireman's department last week at the concession stand. That was, that was fun. That was fun to work with the fire department, to work with all of you in a, in a totally different social environment. So thanks to all of you for attending and helping with that. And the last thing that I have is I'm looking forward to graduation this Friday at seven PM. We're back at the CIRK. We're back at the CIRK. So we're going to be back to our typical environment on Friday. And I really hope students and families are really excited for this event. This is going to be a really great event on Friday. That's it for me.
Just real quick, we did a MCSBA new members training past weekend and stuff. And Kristen, as well as Megan, attended and stuff. So it was good conversations and stuff, some interesting viewpoints were voiced at the beginning and stuff. But everybody at the end of the day kind of came around to, all right, we have a role here. And it's, it's not what we necessarily always think it is and stuff. So it was good training. I will be wrapping up my tenure as president next week. And Amy West from Honeydew Falls, Lima, will be taking over. Yeah.
Damon is actually a Spencerport graduate.
She is a Spencerport graduate, a classmate of Barto. Yep.
Good to be back.
Great to see you.
All my favorite people.
Great to see you. Great to have you, Kate.
I'll just give a shout out to all the teachers and staff who made it through this year. I know the high school teachers have a little bit more to go here with exams. But I'll share that I volunteered at elementary school field days at Canal View for only two hours. And I took my hat to you, sir, because
Thank you.
I don't know how somebody spends all day, every day, rankling children that age. It was a lot of fun, but it was very tiring to just be with them for, for two hours. So kudos to especially our elementary teachers who make the end of the year so fun. And I think we have so many creative and energetic teachers here in our district that make the end of the school year just really wonderful for our students. And it doesn't go unnoticed, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you for sharing. It's good to hear.
Nothing major to share, other than I agree with concession stand was fun. One of the best parts was seeing, I was standing next to Mike Canny, the principal of Monroe. And kids would come up and they'd have this look on their face like, that's, they'd say, that's my principal. And I'd say, I know, is it, he's going to give me a hot dog? Like, just to see their faces, seeing somebody, you know. It's like the principal actually does wear pajamas to bed. So it was totally enjoyable. I will say that being short, my calves took a little bit to recover from standing on my toes to reach over the grill. But other than that, it was a wonderful time.
This year, I did have a fried bologna sandwich from the fireman's carnival. And it's not before me. I tried it the first time and it was just so.
Did you have hot sauce on it?
No, I had to cover the onions, thinking it would fill up my, but it just didn't. Didn't that for me. So, you know.
My last BA gets to skate. Starting in July, I'll be associated with all sorts of different clubs, activities, post boards, and everything else. So I'm going to have to sign up for it. So my last week will be quiet.
Fantastic. I just have one more real quick one.
No, you can mention.
Big shout out to the special ed staff, the special ed teachers, the aides, everybody. The administrators that all came out for the Special Olympics. It was, that was amazing. And a similar feeling to what you expressed, especially with the elementary kids. It was just something to see on the football field. It was a lot of fun. So great job to everybody that was involved.
All right, so what we'll do now is we'll move on to our next item. Thank you for sharing all that good news. And we'll see you Friday night, for those of you that are attending graduation.
Real quick, I don't care what was reported. I know what was reported.
We have to walk on at like six fifty-five.
Right, right.
Like six, six thirty. Yeah.
I'll be there early because I just love getting places early. I'll make sure the rooms all set up for us. We go upstairs.
He's going to be eating, is what he's doing.
So yeah. Somebody just, just, yeah. Point me in the right direction. You know, like, well.
Yes, we'll see.
I'm going tomorrow. The, the students are doing their rehearsal. So I'll make sure to take notes because I felt the same way. I've never been to, obviously, Spencerport graduation. So I wanted to get a sense of the format, where to park. So I'll make sure to share my notes, you know, to help an ally.
When you go into the building, you go up the stairs, go to the left, and there's a room where we kind of get ourselves ready. And then we'll be called.
The last time I was there, I was.
Yeah, it is a, it's a, it's not a weight room, but it's other. There's all sorts of band exercises, things you can do while you're waiting.
Mine's a weight class.
All right, let's move right along here to the superintendent's report. We'll turn it over to our superintendent.
Thank you. Thanks. So I'm going to ask Jonathan if he'll come up. Leah, I'm not sure when you had walked in. So in preparation for this part of the meeting, I had asked Jonathan just to share a summary of public hearing in case the board members weren't available. And then we're going to go through just any other recommendations.
And I had, you have Darren Price. So he's with me. He was presenting on the SAVE Plan during the public hearing across the last meeting. As Ms. Swan said, this is really just a quick summary. We did present on both during the public hearing. I think this Brown was not present for the entirety of the hearing. Procedures that we followed, basically letting everybody know you have an opportunity for comment. The hearing itself was being recorded. We kind of went similar to privilege of the floor, except we didn't have anything more than a signup sheet. And that individuals could sign up after they, or even while the presentation was taking place. So that if they didn't have a chance or decided as one individual that decided to speak upon that conclusion of my remarks. Open hearing itself was held at five thirty. It started with the SAVE Plan, moved on to the Code of Conduct, both with their individual comment periods. SAVE Plan, we did not have any comments. Here just at the SAVE Plan itself. The proposed provisions, as you're aware, routine information, equipment inventory, building inventories. But the new section, which is the pandemic section, response section required by the state, really a recitation of what we went through. And gearing us towards continuity of operations, if you will. We end up in another situation like that, as well as designating which unit members or units would be required to report during such an incident. And really towards maintaining operations. And we did, you know, during, in the heat of it, we exercised some discretion with respect to work schedules and other things like that. But each of those decisions could end up being a pandemic or I guess disease specific, if you will, depending on what we're responding to at the time. Does anyone have any questions regarding that section? Well, I have Darren here with us. All right. Code of Conduct. So comment period. Ms. Parker was kind enough to leave a copy of her remarks with Marcy. I was able to look through those again. We had three speakers for everyone who didn't get a chance to hear them. Really, I think, as, as similar to our last conversation, last meeting, focused on any potential changes to the mandatory minimum sections. Both from the violence paragraph, substantially disruptive. And then at the beginning of today's meeting, we heard a comment about the mandatory minimum for drug-related suspensions. Concerns, obviously, from staff members, concerns from parents as well with respect to removing those. Don't want to discount what was said. We have the changes that we discussed from last time. They, they are the same for today. But hopefully by the time we, you know, have a little more discussion, if you will, about what to go through today. We can leave here with, or at least I can leave here with some potential alterations to make, if you will. And then bring that back for a future meeting for full approval. The SAVE Plan itself will be hopefully posted tomorrow in the superintendent's office. The public has a chance to review that for thirty days. The Code of Conduct, traditionally, Spencerport just kind of comes along at the same time. It doesn't require thirty days, but that will allow us some time to make any alterations to the language that we put forth for changes. Proposed changes. These two paragraphs are really, in this slide, a little different from what I had before. I just put paragraphs there to make sure that you had them as a quick reference if you needed. The first paragraph was straight out of a suspension policy as suggested by our equity committee. And then the second paragraph is really just a bolder statement about restored practices. And then the second paragraph is really just a bolder statement about restored practices. Didn't hear much feedback with respect to these. I don't know how we wanna, you know, reflect on that. If there's no questions regarding this section, I would probably, nevermind.
I do just one. So the code of conduct is a document that kind of lives on in perpetuity. I'm just wondering why we need to specifically reference the 2223 school year? Because that's gonna become stale in one year. My preference would be that we come up with wording that's a little bit more generic.
I mean, yeah, we just take away during the 2223 school year.
Yeah.
They do, and I didn't think of it simply because we update this on an annual basis. And I think we were looking at doing more code of conduct changes for next year with respect to restored practices. But, yeah, I mean, that paragraph was maintained, as you said, in perpetuity with the code of conduct. Tip line, as, I'm not sure if you were here at the time when I mentioned this during the public hearing. This section will be included as an extra page in the code of conduct, but we are exploring other options for a form or a portal on the website so that we can set up a more anonymous means of students contacting, which does not involve. But we still wanted to have some information to families and students with respect to, putting in tips and other comments.
I'm sorry, I just have one question, which I didn't, I'm just seeing it now, so I apologize for not sending it ahead time. But is there, how quickly is the tip line responded to or listened to? I'm gonna, this is my point. I know, but it's not, there's probably, I'm assuming, a statement about if an emergency call 911. I'm a little concerned, like, if you have somebody who's gonna be reporting a violence or if there's a suicide ideation, I wouldn't want it left on the tip line if it isn't checked. I would like somebody to call regardless, but I'm just saying, is there a way to? If somebody's in crisis, I don't know how fast it's responded to. That's my point.
It is an, I said this carefully, it is an active system, which will send a notification out when a tip is entered into the system. It's monitored by Frontier, but the Frontier guy that sends that statement right now to our director of security.
So it's not something that's checked on a 24-hour basis or something?
Because, because it sends it immediately to someone. But that is part of our discussion about setting up a different alternative, either through a form or a web portal to ensure that that sentence is an active response system, as opposed to a passive system, which would require checking in.
Right, so is it email or text that's sent to the director?
It can be both.
Over here.
Yes. I don't know what it is. I said, it can be both. I don't know how it's set up currently. Do you know what he's?
I had a question that was just somewhat related. I've noticed that some districts seem like they outsource this to a third party whose business it is to run a security line like this. Has any consideration ever been given to outsourcing? And this might be a different conversation for a different thing. But it might alleviate some of the concerns that Leah was just raising.
I would say, yes. I was on an organization, I think, so they say something just the other day, and I attempted to put in my information to contact by them, so I could at least find out how much it is. There are organizations out there that will monitor 24/7.
Yes, and they look like they already have a tax option available.
Yes, and it is a web, loves them, or a web portal. The whole district website will link you to that, and then you fill out their form. Does it add, you know, both to add a layer of anonymity, but also to have that 24/7 protection? I think that would be a consideration we have to talk about, you know, as we implement changes district-wide. And, you know, I don't know what the costs are with respect, but, yeah, that has.
Just a reminder that we do have another system that monitors what students are searching and putting on their computer, whether, you know, there's any suicidal interactions. We do get those alerts as well, in addition to this.
I just wanna make sure if somebody was calling for help in the moment, that they was, you know. It's like when you call a pediatrician and they say, "It was a emergency."
Any more questions about this one before we move on? Alright, prohibited student behavior. This, as mentioned during our first meeting and during the public hearing, this really is, or, you know, a single one-off here, and the effect of that sentence, both here and in a couple of other districts. If we, we could, the proposal was to eliminate, it could be left, and the likelihood of it coming up is. That being said, we could try and modify, come up with some language which kind of encompasses both aims of prohibiting students from having a weapon on school property or school events, but still allowing some sort of statement that it really is limited to law enforcement officers bringing the weapon, bringing their essentially service weapons onto school grounds.
Is this, this is specifically under the student section, correct? Is it?
Yes.
So it's currently under the student behavior?
Prohibited student behavior.
Right. I mean, we don't have any students that are law enforcement officers. I mean, I'm just, right, so, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, so. But there's a separate section for staff, or, right? Does this student behavior incorporate everybody, or? Just students? I don't have, I apologize.
I have to go back and look at the wording of the clauses preempting that. I know it's prohibited behavior. When we were talking about this, it was related.
To students, right.
But the code of conduct does have a section in there which talks about visitors to school grounds and campuses and buildings, which would be intended is so that that code of conduct applies both to students, staff, and visitors. So it would be prohibited for an individual to bring, depending on how those clauses would work. The law of the student section, maybe in more general section of the code of conduct. This statement does, yes.
Yeah, so it's not just student behavior, it's anybody's behavior.
And we can, we can definitely look at that, putting it elsewhere. I don't know, it's still probably wanna reword it a little bit, just because of, just to respond to that individual hearing. But, yeah, I mean, we could put that in any number of places.
Well, because I think to Leah's point, if this is strictly student behavior, all you need is the first three words.
I'm fine with a hard stop. I'm having a hard time understanding.
I'm just saying, we don't need the qualifying part.
Correct.
If it's under specifically a student section, it just says, it's prohibited to possess a weapon. That's it.
I just wanted to talk that, and I apologize, I can't find it right away. But part of the conversation that Jonathan and I had that came up in earlier meetings was that we didn't want any inference from community members to think that they were able to carry some sort of weapon or device on campus. So, again, I apologize, but I wanna make sure that it is under the student section, not the more general section.
But it applies to the more general population of anybody in our community. They're not allowed to come along.
Right.
So I think that's, maybe it has to be in several places, but it has to be applicable to anybody who wants to come through our, including staff.
Yes, if we're gonna go that route, yeah, I wanna put it in the visitor section, as well as, you know, making sure it applies to everyone coming up.
Sure, Jonathan. Prohibited student behavior, possessing weapon, period.
Yeah, it could be that simple.
That's.
But would we want it to incorporate on school property or at a school function?
I think.
Or is that not necessary?
I don't think it's necessary, because those prohibited behaviors, we would.
Is there already language that says?
Yeah, because otherwise we'd have to have that after every, after every. I think it's, because of what else is in there, it's inferred that this is your behavior. It applies, whether you are on school grounds, a school event, you could be on a trip to Spain, and it's a school-sponsored trip, so therefore the code of conduct still applies. Alright, so we will look at a slightly different way to word it and include it in other sections of the code to make the same point, and just leave it out of this prohibited student behavior section. Alright, thank you. Alright. Next up, not a lot of feedback about this one. This is really just a notice that the student could lose access to district computers and/or internet connections if they engage in some sort of inappropriate behavior. Now, mandatory minimums. So, as I mentioned during the hearing, for those of you who were here, there's a few sections. Number one is really about firearms. That's, there's, we can't change that, that's the free schools act. This is violent acts other than bringing a firearm to school. The examples are still in here. I wasn't sure if I left them on the slide. With this, it's. Because the principal has the authority to modify the minimum two-day suspension, whether we change it or not, the, arguably, the discretion is there to make those changes. But it's also, you know, kind of making that statement that, you know, a minimum, do you need a? I know the statute says we need a minimum, but do we really need a minimum? Per se, for some behaviors, if what we really need is discretion in, and based in our administrators, our building administrators and superintendent. So it's, it's one of those, you know, we've got a lot of feedback. Obviously, we had feedback from the speakers during our public comment period. It's, yeah.
I'm shifting my thing after, you know, even given what, all the input, given Laurie's nice summary, make a joke about her Supreme Court. I am, I am back to shall be subject, because it does have the authority modified. It does have that flexibility in there, and I think hearing and looking at all the even house we've got today, yay. And I think there's no, I'm not seeing a real reason to change it.
Just in the interest of me trying to understand what's driving this. Can I understand, where did this concept come from, or what committee was discussing this? Or how did this proposal come about?
So this was, they kind of came together talking about reducing the mandatory minimums. This and the next paragraph, and this really just moving a little bit steps further towards either restored justice or additional discretion in the superintendent, I think, towards a couple of cases, especially for this one. So this was the main driver of reducing the minimums because of a student whose medical professionals indicated that this could be harmful of a mandatory minimum. These other two just kind of went along with that discretion, if you will.
So has it been discussed at a committee level or anything like that?
Just at the safety committee. Just reviewed with the safety committee.
Are other districts taking this action, or? I don't know, Laurie, if other school districts are taking this action in addition to the safety committee. I speak with the principals, obviously, when there are suspensions and long-term suspensions, obviously, because those kids are going to parents. What I recognize in our community is that they wanted continuity around suspensions. But I think that we have to work on that. And when I read also about the principal's authority to modify, this really was also, the genesis was at the elementary level. Like, how will we respond to kids, and even at the middle school level, who require more instruction and support around their behaviors? For any suspension, long-term suspension, the principals and I are constantly in conversation, and I think I shared over email. I think suspension-wise, Sean and I at the high school really are aligned with any type of violent recommendation. And we've been aligned with the superintendent hearing officer. So it's really about what will we do for students, mostly at the elementary and middle school level, who fall into this. There's consideration around practice for students with disabilities, particularly our 811, our students who are in 811 settings, in making sure that we're not violating the code of conduct in any way.
Right, but disabilities, students with disabilities are carved out of this.
Well, they, they would have a manifestation meeting, but they may still be subjected to suspension. Right now, to always find a manifestation, so you would just ask, like, where did the conversations come from? The other part is Jonathan said was really around drug and alcohol abuse and substance abuse, and what that looks like for our students. I'll share with you, just last week, I reviewed the risk survey that our middle school and high school students participated in this year, and looked at some of the preliminary results. And the level of Aces that our students are coming to us with, and what those behaviors produce, require us to think differently about how we're supporting students and suspending students. So that was really the genesis of all of these conversations. I hope that I communicated well in our email communications that we're not looking for restorative practices to not hold students accountable for harmful behavior. And I think that that's sometimes the misconception that students won't be held accountable for their behavior. It's really just looking differently, particularly at students who have repeat offenses. What we're gonna do different for them.
So if we were to not make any changes to the language regarding the violent acts and the substantially disruptive categories, how would you see that being a problem, if no amendments were made?
I don't, I wouldn't see it being a problem. Again, we looked at all of these more holistically when we came out with our recommendation. I think the language is minimal. What I do reflect on is that word shall and may, even in my own thinking. You know, shall is they, they will be subject to suspension. But of course, short-term suspension does have, again, the principal authority. But even with that, I'll share, I've asked for data to look at what does our suspension practices look like? How consistent are they across all of the administrators? So this is ongoing future work that we're starting to put data to as well.
I have a quick question that might take us, I'm sorry I wasn't here for these other conversations, but I'm gonna take us down the path. If there is, to Mrs. Buckner's point, if there is a staff member who's struck or injured in an altercation, a violent act, is that taken as a whole in the, how they kind of analyze the situation? Or is that something that is taken as above and beyond? And so, like, kids get into a fight and they are having an altercation with each other, that is one set of circumstances. But if a staff member gets involved and they get struck, is that something that kind of goes to another level? Or those are the kinds of situations for me, and I know it's hot tempers and things are getting out of control, but those are the kinds of things to me that get my hackles up, because, and I know everybody in here feels that way. But um, when they were speaking about that, I'm just wondering if there's another level to that that isn't analyzed.
I I, yes, and it also becomes, that would become possible evidence at a hearing. Um, we've even brought as evidence posturing behavior. So, you know, not an actual, you know, physical altercation, but even posturing in that way. And that's evidence that is um, given to the superintendent here, you know, through the superintendent hearing. The superintendent hearing officer absolutely considers that. Yes.
So if we look at this one and the firearm one and leave them as is, but take a, take a maybe a little bit more of a look at the drug and alcohol one.
We just turned off Gary.
Huh?
You you said leave it as it is, leave it as it is with the changes or? So remove the changes.
Correct.
So, okay, thank you.
Correct. Just go with the.
Go with the existing language.
Yeah, and then, but then take a look at the drug and alcohol ones. It's like, those are like two day, five day things and stuff. And these are five to twenty weeks. That's an entirely different thing.
It it is, and I I, this is my one area where I can go back to a lot of past history. Um, you know, I even reflect that more for certain acting suspension for many districts that I worked with. If a staff member got hit, the penalty was essentially doubled.
But even that was only ten days.
This are five. This goes way beyond that. And the way it's implemented in many districts is you will get a law very, very long term suspension put on your record, and then they break the record. So that sits on your record the entire time because that is the only way the commissioner allows you to implement things. Like pay program of support or counseling or restitution or any of those other things. Education law only allows for suspension. So if that's the case, it it's it's become a leverage point that districts can use to get other things.
If any section of this.
So, so I'm sorry.
To me, it's this.
Yeah, but what happens then if you remove that? Then you don't have your leverage point?
You could still have the leverage point, you just don't have a stated number there, your leverage point. So if you don't lose the left, well.
Why does the stated number have to be five to twenty weeks for this when it's two to five days? For those other.
Well, Mike, but but is that, is that because if then you could implement something like substance abuse counseling, right?
It it gives you time to implement and react to the situation in in some circumstances. At least anecdotally, what I've heard from districts that allows them, as you said, to get the counseling in place. But at the same time, it doesn't mandate anything. The student chooses to not engage. They are out for twenty weeks. And you have to let them in the next day when they come back, and they could do nothing that you wanted, and you get no advancement with that child. And they're probably just.
Then why aren't we not trying to put some language in here that requires engagement in treatment, engagement in?
That's what I'm saying. I don't think that you can. I think the commissioner uses the.
We we can't enforce that as a penalty.
So it can't be like any alternative, like in most.
I I just this.
No, like there are districts that have tried community service and the commissioner shot it down.
This this whole five to twenty weeks.
But the, but if I'm understanding, I I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to understand that. But so the initial rationale though was that it was to encourage students to take advantage of other community resources. Is that correct?
I don't know how it got to this level. I think that's how it was implemented. When I started doing hearings, a number of districts were already at the ten to fifteen to twenty weeks. At that level of of very traditional, don't want this in our schools.
Just say no.
So just whatever it is, and the the stuff that comes in. I'm going to give ideas for the kids who are watching, but the stuff that comes in, it it's it's not to the level of, you know, got to have a giant police response. Most of this, I think, is where the superintendent would need to apply discretion for the kids who are repeat users, their low level things which are now evil versus still having the discretion. If something really bad comes in, you can put that long term suspension and go.
I just didn't want to remove resources from students by changing language. That was my point.
So we look at this objectively, the first paragraph, the only change is that we're just changing the the scope of this potential suspension from long term to suspension, right? That's the only change.
As drafted, it doesn't mean there will be a.
Yeah, there will be a suspension.
Right now, yes, as drafted, yes, the change would be for mandating a longer. So you have a a essentially it's a minimum of five days.
And that's, that's a significant, I don't want to gloss over that part. You know, when a student is repeatedly suspended for a long term suspension, at the minimum, they're missing five days of instruction. When we look at students who have been repeat offenders, they are at risk of fouling school. And um. We collectively have had conversations around particular students that we don't want to miss five days of school. These are, some students are very compliant. They are nonchalant around drug use, but they're missing considerable uh, days of instruction. So that's where that recommendation is. Yes, you will be suspended. Again, there will be an accountability for the behavior, but we don't want you to keep missing at a minimum five days of days of instruction, which can occur on, you know, multiple times throughout the semester.
Um, so a couple of things, when they're longer term suspended, they get homeschooling or no, they get any works at home, like they have a.
Their mandated tutoring.
Right, so they are going to some, they're not completely zero. So if I just go back to the the two day thing, I know we're kind of shifting gears here, but you know, it, you know, it's unfortunate that a student gets to spend multiple times or out, it's unfortunate, I mean, whatever the situation is. But for me, the other unfortunate thing is that if they continue to be in the classroom, for whatever reason, their behavior could be, could be voting other kids strong. Get their education, right? They're in a classroom who are being disrupted by this one student who can't get their act together. So although I have empathy for a student who makes continued mistakes and they're, they have to face the judge of these things. But I think about the other room full of kids who are doing right thing, and they have to be exposed to a student continually chipping away and eroding away their day because they can't get their act together. Now, I agree that letting them off a long period of time could have some unforeseen, they have consequences for the student because they're home and we know the reasons for that. But if I had to err in the side of caution, I got twenty other kids who are going into the classroom to do the thing. I don't want to see their education eroded because of one student. And that holds true with, uh, I'm going to pick a dead horse, but the the two day thing, um, I I'm a hundred percent opposed to removing the minimum to zero, whatever. Um, you know, we live this lens as we sit right now with our current staff and population of administrators. But that can always change. You know, we got some strong administrators, we have a bunch of new ones. But, you know, Lori brought some very good points in her email. Um, there has to be a floor, I think, for this type of stuff where these things going on. And the biggest thing is that, you know, for the message it sends to the teachers and to the other students, that this student is doing X, Y, or Z, they're getting nothing. I mean, I I think it really, in my opinion, disrespectful to the teachers and the other students um, to bear witness to this, that it had nothing done. Because they're, they are doing things not to be in that situation, you know. Um, so I have one thing.
You're referring to violence and weapons right now, right?
Yeah, yeah, the other two day thing, yeah, so, um, and um, I think I'll stop right there. I have one more thing.
But are we, are we all in agreement that that?
Well, I wasn't going to be presumptuous assumed that that else will say for me.
Removing that two day thing is not something that we want to do. On those two things, on those.
Well, what are there? Violence and weapons were not making.
Are we all like in raging agreement and just kind of running around? So then if we have to look at this substance, drugs, drug alcohol, substance abuse.
I'm just going to drop it in my two cents here. We just substance abuse, uh, drugs and alcohol, it's, you know, they're being exposed to it, not necessarily at school. My two cents with this is, I think these are good changes because if kids are struggling with addiction and disease, I want them getting caught at school so that we keep talking about it because most of the time it's those conversations are not happening at home, which is why they're struggling. So I personally am in favor of the changes on the board in this.
I should ask one question. It's actually of Darren, if you don't mind. Does it make a difference of security wise? In terms of having people return sooner?
I think in any case, it makes a difference. I I I don't think it makes a difference to the to the worst to have kids return more. I think it it makes a difference if there's not consistency.
I just, um. I always like to think of it also from the perspective of a student who may be reading it to see what the penalties might be. I do not agree with what we currently have, but I do wonder if there should be some kind of commentary set forth as to what the consequence might be. So so that somebody who who um, maybe does have a serious issue with this and does need a longer term suspension would understand, look, you may be facing a consequence of up to X number days, weeks, whatever. Um, just so that they know what the outside penalty might be, but still, still have enough discretion to for the superintendent or principal to decide on a lesser penalty. I just out of a sense of justice or fairness, I want our students to understand the consequence they might be facing. And by completely removing it, a reference to what they might be facing, I I just double that a little bit.
I'm sorry, I real, I I really appreciate and understand what you're saying because that is, you know, what do you do when you get a new job? You flip to how much vacation you got, right? So you want to see what's going on with that. But kind of to Jonathan's point is in this instance, I truly believe the kids who are getting penalized for this kind of infraction don't care if they're out of school. So that that's just another vehicle for what they want to be doing anyway. So just another, you know, I got what you're saying. I I I got it. It's not an easy.
Well, I mean, right now, the range is five to twenty weeks. It could be two days to twenty weeks, but. Yeah, and make it so that there is that ability to kind of look at each individual case and and do what is right for that individuals do. I don't know.
So.
It's five to twenty weeks, they just catch it, man, and it's like.
So is there impetus here as a group, the first paragraph where the long term is axed out?
Yeah.
Does anyone have an issue with leaving a long term?
Well, I do, in in the sense that is it, I mean, what are we counting long term? Five days? I mean, after five days is longer. So you're saying that nobody's going to receive a suspension?
No.
Doesn't it not required to be a long term?
It still could be.
It may be.
Yeah, it's going to be.
Shall.
But instead of five weeks to twenty weeks, we look at, you know, two days to twenty.
The thing you got, with something like this, when we're talking about addiction, you have that balance, you know, because think about it, if a student is choosing to use, they want to change the way they feel. They're not currently feeling good for some reason, and they're they're addicted. And that's why I think we need discretion in here. And we have to treat it with a case by case basis because when you get into addiction, it gets deeper. It gets deeper because that there's that piece of, yeah, the consequence, but also that piece of, okay, getting the student help.
Right, but we we do have to do it there. Doesn't just include possession.
Right.
Or use. Our codes of selling and distribution as well, so.
A range, right?
Right.
A range. Selling a possession, we're going to be involving RPD or the sheriff's office, right? You know. And then those consequences come with the, have the bear, but.
So.
Share, you know, I shared it over email. I I think that this is also could be potentially damaging for other situations that don't give us the flexibility to not engage in a long term suspension. You know, and that that happened this year. We 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 had to engage in a hearing. We had to engage in the process of a long term suspension.
Because you were stuck already at five days.
With the way that's written, and it didn't allow us the flexibility that everybody wanted to provide that situation.
So I'm going to officially pick at that horse, but I I remember I was going to say it five minutes ago. I'm sorry. Um, and to your point, Gary, I know we're going with the two day thing, but what I thought about was that I know that the the these things are, they're they're growing in numbers for a lot of reasons, and a lot of work for super, all superintendents, all principals, so on. But in my opinion, um, I think it pales to compare to the the loss of um, authority a teacher has in the classroom when there's a fight and it can't do anything, or if a kid postures or tells a teacher to F off, whatever. I mean, once that egg is cracked, it's 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 really tough. It's really tough uh, for two teachers in a classroom on the board here uh, to ever get that back. And and I think that kids have to know where the line is. And once kids cross that line, right, twenty six years, thirty one years, um, you can't, you can't ring about, you know, so I I think it's more as a, it's an insurance policy, the teachers, and it's like a, you know, a but tool in their, I was a weapon, a tool in their back pocket that hopefully the kids understand. But to some else point here, if they know it's zero, you just give even open doors, oh, I can tell Mr. Brack every one, because you know what? They could, it's a gamble they're going to take, you know, and you just can't retract that, so.
I think.
Yeah, no, I know, I I say, I'm officially to get that horse, so.
I do have a quick question. Is there a specific reason why we are redlining the superintendent, Nancy, authority to modify this suspension on a case by case basis?
Yeah, why is that?
Only in conjunction with the other change.
Because we've made it all entirely discretionary.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, it it's, the superintendent really has the discretion in all this. I I, there was another in uh, example that Lori brought up about wanting the superintendent to be able to make a decision. You can almost say the same thing for any, any hearing. The superintendent has the, has the discretion to alter the recommendation.
Is there, is there a reason or center down to not put suspended from school typically for two to twenty, two days to twenty weeks? So at least there's something in there that says there is some bare minimum for what you do. But the bare minimum isn't five weeks.
Alternatively, could we go to see if other districts that maybe have a slightly more progressive take on this policy cap wording?
I mean, five weeks just as a minimum seems like.
Or subject to a short or long term suspension. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't give a number, it doesn't give a minimum.
Why? So so let's see, Gary, you're saying it gets to a fight, it gets up to two days, right? No, no, I, I know, I'm getting, I'm getting there. I know, I'm getting there. But here, he brings a joint to school, he gets a much bigger consequence. That's right, that's what I'm saying. You got it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it just doesn't seem like that.
Yes, I I I agree, right, I agree.
We added some, we added the word typically a couple of years ago, right, to 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 bring it down a little bit. It's that next one about, you know, second and subsequent, it's a minimum of twenty weeks. That is super harsh. Yeah, that, um, you know, there are, to Lori's question, there are some other districts that are moving or have moved to like a chart of of what kind of penalties go with what kind of suspension. That. I haven't been doing it for a couple of years. There are like three, three districts around here that have that chart kind of thing. It's really kind of application. In in many cases, the code of conduct becomes a legal document that is entered at the hearing that constrains the hearing officer or the superintendent. It's not going to read that paragraph. They're going to only hear it if the principal tells them. So if the principal's telling that you could get a suspension from two days to twenty weeks, they may or may not listen to it, but I I don't know if I ever had it, if I could hone up to actually reading this until they were actually charged with it.
Philly is pulling earlier today, like you said, you ask kids if they are about this, of course they are. So is there, are are we at some point where we can put that there is some minimum that's possible? But not five, not five weeks is the minimum.
Two, I mean, let me throw some of the, can we just say five days to twenty weeks? I mean, can we just throw some?
I think, I think the point is that there are some situations that don't even warrant five days.
I agree.
Well, I'm just trying to move.
Yeah. Two days. But and in all cases, the superintendent has.
Yeah.
I think that's.
I think how it says, you know, students will be subject to a suspension from school. There is some sort of suspension and accountability. I would prefer to not be in the situation that I was this year where I had to suspend. I there there were, there was a case where I wouldn't have suspended. It was would have been the right thing for the case, the student, family, everybody involved. So even to put a minimum of five days doesn't help in that type of situation.
Not sure why. I mean.
Because a five day suspension or more has to go to a year.
So let's change it to two days to 20 weeks.
Yeah.
And leave in the superintendent has the authority to modify that on a case by case basis. But we we bring this, bring this one a little bit more in alignment with the violent acts, bringing a weapon to school pieces of the code of conduct, which they're only in two or five days, right? As minimums.
Yeah.
This one is way out of whack with that, you know.
You know, one thing I'll see in this is is progressive. So, I mean, you know, a, you know, like a fence number one is X, and then the fence, you know, number two, it doesn't really say, should we be sharing that, you know, it progressively gets worse or more or more intense?
Sex and oil.
I mean, because.
I would envision that becoming a problem for the adherent situation based on what we just said in terms of.
The hearing officer.
Becoming constrained by some kind of.
They're gonna be tied to whatever is in this. If if I don't, I'd have to look back through and see if there's a statement about progressive discipline.
Yeah, because it gives a.
If there's a generalized thinking about progressive discipline being being applied at subsequent, you're not tying them to anything. You're just kind of setting the guidelines like the story, restored practices. But if you start, if you do a chart that says two days, five days, 20 days, five weeks, you know, 20 weeks, the hearing officer is gonna be tied to that. Because the board is the one putting this in place.
So you're you're set there. Second and some sort of defense will result in X, Y, and Z. That's where you would have that.
We could change that to progressive discipline will be applied, come up with some sentence so that it's not that that minimum of 20 weeks. You can't, the hearing officer can't go away from that.
So that, but if you do put some language in there that highlights that if you keep doing this stuff, it's just gonna get worse and worse and worse.
That's my point. Like, a savvy drug dealer is gonna say, every month I get two days off.
Yeah, no.
It it so, but and the second offense now it's this longer, has to be, you know, he's got, he's moving up the ladder. Because two days is really, I mean, reality. Yeah.
We looked at some language, get back to the board, but what I think in hearing is also a better alignment to the minimums of the other sections.
Yeah, absolutely.
Question, do all the drug alcohol and paraphernalia related cases come across your desk?
Right now, yes.
Because they have to, because it's a long term suspension.
Yes.
If it did.
If it wasn't, if it was, if it was two days, would it come across your desk?
It might not. It might be the the principal's discretion to have a suspension.
But the second offense, if we go that route, then you see, it's just one of those things where, okay.
Well, I mean, because the problem is now you're gonna make sure you go consistently across the building, right? And that's going to be critical.
But if I could add my, again, that's what I'm looking at at the end of this year, because even though these cases do come across my desk because they're going to a superintendent hearing. What I wanted to look at holistically at the end of this year was what was the consistency around the suspension? So we have different superintendent hearing officers making different recommendations. Um, and I I think that there's some improvement upon the consistency of suspensions across the board. So I think that that's an obligation that we have, whether it comes across my desk or not, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, and we're looking at that.
Good discussion.
I just have one point. I don't need to go back to any of that. I just wanna, I think that I certainly, I'll receive emails today and those people who spoke at the public hearing. I think that with the sentiment that we're hearing now, regardless, if we're focusing on a minimum suspension, but the concern is student behavior not being addressed. So regardless of the minimum number, that's a overwhelming theme. I know that's what we're hearing over and over is that there's the feeling from staff, from parents, that there is behavior that is going unaddressed. Now, maybe the suspension isn't, maybe the minimum suspension isn't the avenue, but there is a large concern about violence in the schools, behavior in the schools, you know. Here's the deal, I'm not talking about language like you're saying it to your friend, right? But you're swearing at a staff member. We have, there's a level of disrespect that we're hearing that's pervasive. And I think that can't be ignored, regardless of the, the minimum is we're hearing about it because of the code of conduct change, right? And all of a sudden, it's like, wait, now that's gonna go away too. But the concern is we don't feel safe in our building. And that we can't, like, that the code of conduct isn't going to fix, so.
I think that's well said, Leah, and I, I would add upon that it's really understanding the root of why those behaviors are occurring.
The beginning.
You know, and that's really our ongoing work. So again, just looking at the risk behavior information, like that's the tip of the iceberg. Um, but that the information that's in there really needs to be digested and understood because we have to have a different behavioral response. Um, and and I, I agree, I I do think, and it's never, I don't believe anybody here, myself included, want to minimize people saying behavior feels extreme and it needs to be addressed. That's not what those changes were about, but we really have to have a better understanding of what is driving this behavior.
Yeah.
Great. And understanding that's that staff is feeling stuck. You know, and they're looking at and by removing a minimum suspension, you're feeling like I had one lifeline, you know what I mean? And now that's taken too. So I think that's the part that we really are, I think, you know, based on the stuff that I'm hearing in community, that the other communities are like, that's feeling. And, um, you know, I've said it before, students can't learn, we feel unsafe, staff can't teach when they feel unsafe. It's a bad environment for all. So that we have to, you know, understanding the root in terms of what's affecting kids is one thing, right? We might get there. But we gotta deal like, you know, like we gotta, I'm a runner and we say you run the mile you're in, you know what I mean? Like, we gotta run the mile we're at. So right now, we're in a storm, right? So what can we provide to people now to feel some relief? And I think that's why you're here, like, why there's so much outrage, is they're feeling their miles uphill.
All right.
Still need everybody.
We have guidance, make some changes, present, talk with the superintendent about some of these and present language back to you in anticipation of the future meeting where you would approve changes to the code of conduct.
Thank you. Thanks, Darren.
So this is like part seven, eight, nine, I'm not sure. I kept counting with the 7,000 and 8,000. Really, Leah, I know you you sent me an email with questions. I've been trying to address at least one of them here. I created a separate chart that I keep track of what policies have gone to the board, what policies I've sent to Erie One, of what policies that need to come back to the board. Um, and now I've been engaged going through the four minutes, ensuring that I catch all of those, the emails that we've sent back and forth to make sure I don't miss any before bringing them back here, so we have any additional changes that need to happen.
So there's no way for me, though, currently, right? Am I missing a code? That's what I'm asking.
Not in the one note, no.
Okay. I see X's.
Kind of created problems, got created once we started going to PDFs and then coming back and then the X's and things got confusing. So trying to clean it up, I'm keeping track of everything. These are the last four essential policies that you haven't seen yet at all. Um, because of the magnitude of the Title IX, the wellness policy had to go to the wellness committee so that for them to consider um, some of the changes, and even the changes with the wellness policy were weren't really significant changes. Their order of all of our paragraphs was different. So there's all sorts of maneuvering. And so there were some slight wording changes, but when our committee did the policy, it was different way it was arranged. The student attendance policy, that just really had three policies, three substantial policies that had to be incorporated into one large policy that covers a lot to make sure that we have that out there. Then the concussion management policy, that one, it's it's basic in the way that Erie One has written it. Um, when I met with Mr. O'Connor and our medical director to talk about changes to that, I was informed that there are more changes coming. There are committees that we will have to form that it's almost like, let's just adopt the Erie One policy, get it started so we can be what we need to right now. And then there is more stuff coming from the state about how we need to react to concussion. That being said, it does not mean that those protocols are coming down. We'll need to slide into the policy. That could be protocols, whether medical or school related, that could be kept outside of. And when we talked with with our medical director and Mr. O'Connor, we really only made one change, one or two changes with this policy, and that was really just to reflect that the medical director relies on a release from the student physician, a licensed physician. I don't know where that will go, but that's what is relied upon now is as part of the process. Um, when I checked around lunchtime, I didn't see any questions regarding any of these.
I put one into you late, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
It's a minor, it's minor. I'm just curious as to, it was actually the wellness policy, so Jamie, you might, I don't know if that was you. There was just one of these student fundraiser in the, I don't have it, in the wellness policy, it talks about student fundraisers. So sponsored fundraisers by the school. Okay? But outside of the school day. And it says that we would recommend that they follow, it was recommended is the word, they would follow the policy, not require.
Was it encourage?
Encourage. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Encourage. That's the word we want, right? I'm fine with it. I'm just making sure that that was that it was incon, that it was consistent with the policy. Let me see if I can. It's not critical. It's not critical. We don't need, it's not.
I I could see.
Major discussion item.
I'll double check. I could see it being encouraged there. There's just a lot of groups that use things like bar cues and other things.
Well, that's exactly what I was going with. You do candy, you do candy bars, you do hot potatoes, which I don't know if they need to qualification, but sorry, I don't, um. You know, they do pie sales, so we would want it to say encourage, but not require.
Right. At at this point, I think so. I think unless we were really, unless, you know, unless we had a plan for how to help them.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that was in line with the policy. Yes, okay. Sorry, I couldn't pull it up with you that far.
All right. So if there's nothing else, thank you. We'll be getting back to you with a a list of policies that we need to come back and revisit. Some of, I've got a couple that I need to send out. I've got others that are just simple language change that we can make as typical practice. Um, and then I'm waiting to get the whatever policies from Erie One that we have changes that need to happen that we need to address since we got these policies in 2009. So that could be significant. So we'll have to to see how that comes in and we'll work, and have our talk verbally with with our representatives at Erie One. Um, it seems that it's pretty standard that districts don't necessarily get done until September of their year, so they're they're finally working with us. And we're still contracting with them for policy updates on a regular basis. So hopefully by the time we're done, we've got everything drawn together tight.
Thank you, John.
We've been sitting for quite a while.
So keeping in the policy mode, much of why we're here talking tonight is because of the policy 5512. We'll be addressing many of these seven areas, and whatever we don't cover will most likely be covered when you see the end of your financial audit. So reserve funds really, what are they? They're separate accounts used to establish, you know, finance, specific future costs. They're very regulated under education general municipal law. They have a lot of rules that you have to follow in creating, establishing them and managing them. This slide really, you know, how are they acquired? You know, a lot of times fund balance, excess revenues, first hundred expenditures. I think really what I like to highlight this and what I've learned over the years is really, we can have more revenue than we projected. Okay, we can still come under budget, but we may not generate surplus. Suppluses really the excess or deficiency of revenue expense. And you'll sort of see, you've seen that throughout the financial reports each month. So again, historically, just trying to share with you, since 2011, the blue is the expense, the orange is the revenue. Just sort of where that variance is, again, referencing the variance between surplus of revenue and expense. And then below that is just a change in our fund balance. So remember that these numbers won't necessarily tie to these because there's other things within fund balance that are not included in just the revenue expense category. So non-spendable, unappropriated fund balance encumbrances will be included sort of in that group. So things that the board and administration should be concerned about or ask as they're developing these. You know, has the board reviewed all the reserve funds currently established? Are they in the best interest of the taxpayers? And does it fit within or complement the long range financial plan? And I think we do a good job of addressing each. And I think we do a good job of addressing each one of these questions throughout throughout the process of establishing these. Again, I like this format. This is a format that our external auditor uses and it really shares with you. You know, the first four are really those that we use year in, year out, as it relates to helping subsidize our budget. The next area restricted for compensated absence is really based on our vacation and sick pay accruals. What people have at the end of the year and what we'd be responsible for if we were to go belly up. The next section restricted for uninsured losses claims, so liability and tax reserve. The second last restricted for capital, those are the ones that are usually voter approved. They have very specific purpose involved. And then finally debt service fund really has a lot to do with our borrowing. If you have questions as I'm going through, please just raise your hand. This is just a chart. It shows at the end of each year, what our balance has been for each reserve. Again, broken down into the components that I just explained. You can see in 2012, we had nineteen, over nineteen million. In 2021, we have just about seventeen million. There's a lot of things that happened throughout those years that caused the variances. But I'd like to share really sort of how we budgeted this. So you can see in the current year, we had subsidized our budget by about 1.4 million by using the ERS. And then we were pulling a hundred thirty one thousand dollars to for the purchase of a large vehicle. If that were to hold true, you would see what our year end would be. And then for 2022, 2023, we've subsidized our budget by about the same amount so that if we did not generate surplus, we would go, and I like to use the fund balance reserve for total, about seventeen million down to about fourteen. However, I don't think that's going to be where we end up this year. So this is just a projection. It's for illustrative uses only. The second column over the estimated use is what we subsidize our budget for. I think that we are going to have a surplus and that we'll be able to essentially replenish the ERS reserve. And then we can grow some funding into some other reserves. Again, it's for illustrative purposes. Board, when the final audit is done, we'll make that determination. So next, we're going to really get into each reserve. And I'm going to go over these very quickly. I know many of you have seen them, Leah. I know this is sort of your first time through or your second, but if you have questions, please feel free to stop me. Workers' comp reserve voter approval, there's no voter approval. It's really determined by the board. And there is no maximum contribution. If in fact the board wanted to dissolve this, it should be done within sixty days before the fiscal year. This is historically, again, where we've been. We go back to our policy, just sharing with you sort of the revenue, the interest that's received, what we've allocated to subsidize the budget. And then the equity transfer is the funding that we put back into it based on each year's financial flows. So this is really, again, where, let me sort of get the head nod from the board to make sure that we're funding these at a proper level. So the current workers' comp balance is 1.4 million. Again, I've used this over many years. The prior rationale four, five years ago was that it was just four times the annual budget. The annual budget would change each year. That number would change. Last year, I think the board was very supportive of the proposed rationale where it's really becoming a percent of overall payroll for your ERS. And then why we're doing that. Again, workers' comp, they're based the way it's determined. There's various experience factors. You take those into consideration. Some of the years you're going to have a very high experience factor, some of yours long, depending upon the claims that you receive. This helps fluctuate and support how we're funding that. Unemployment is very similar to workers' comp. Again, approval is now authorized in 2009. There is no maximum contribution. Again, a part of why we're going over these and in particular, they're historically where we're at. Why we're going over this is that at some point in time, when the state comptroller comes out and they start looking and auditing our reserve funds, we're going to have to come back to this to show that the board has sort of approved and is okay with how we're funding it because that's what we're going to tie back to. So in this particular case, our balance is currently six hundred sixty thousand. I just want to go back with it. You can see that back in 2009, the equity transfer got it up to about a hundred million dollars. We've not had to put anyone back into that. And you can see we've sort of maintained that just with the interest. Again, very similar. It used to be four times the annual budget. We took the budget twenty five thousand dollars year over year. Proposed rationale is again, a percentage of payroll. Again, I think the logic stands by itself. We're looking at staffing levels and class size guidelines. And that, so we can control in part the student enrollment of those, but there's other market conditions outside of our control that again allows for some flexibility on unemployment. ERS reserve, again, one of our larger reserves. Authorized in 2009 with no approval. There is no maximum contribution. You can see historically, we built that up. And it's been very consistent about 4.2 to 4.5 million dollars over the last several years. You can see that we typically subsidize our budget close to about 1.1 to 1.3 million. So again, the rationale used to be four times the annual budget. I recommend that it's 15% of the ERS payroll. I just want to highlight that this is a change from the prior year slide. What I did was add four years. So essentially, you want to be compliant over a longer period of time to have that kind of reserve to get you through those bumps. Any questions on the ERS? Okay, TRS is a relatively new reserve. We did establish it when it first came out. This one is again, very regulated where you can only put in up to 2% of the prior year salaries for TRS individuals. And that it can't exceed 10% of the total compensation. At this point in time, again, we funded it to the full amount in 2019, 2020. It was always planned. It would be my recommendation to fully fund it in 2021 to continue to, again, build that up. So in the future, we can draw on that.
Great. One question. So that was actually just your language has me asking it. So the recommendation between the minimum and the maximum, you would be providing the board a recommendation. So when you say a minimum of 5%, maximum, minimum of 2%, maximum of 5%.
For the ERS or for the other?
Any of, yes, the ones prior, previous, any of the three.
So really, the recommendation really is as long as we're staying
Within that.
Those, yes.
I was just trying to figure out how we got the, which one got picked.
It, yeah, really, it depends on the market. So for instance, if, you know, we're seeing a high unemployment rate, I may recommend a higher amount in that reserve if we see that over the next couple of years not changing. Okay, again, currently we're at 1.7. Again, usually the recommendation is the mask by law, if surplus allows. So liability reserve. Again, we're fortunate we've not got to use this. It's really how to pay for claims that I always consider above and beyond what our insurance does not cover. So as an example, we used to not have underground storage thing. So that's one of the reasons why we had a much larger reserve now. Because like, at some point in time, I've said this last year, probably a year before, at some point in time, things settle down a little bit. I think really we do need to have a conversation of whether we want to decrease this particular reserve, in part because we've never really used it. To me, it's an umbrella, it's just something strange, right? It's the umbrella that if you ever do. I'm familiar, we've only used it once. We could have used it, or we could potentially use it this year based on a settlement that we made earlier in the year. But again, that's a conversation that I'll have with our external auditor to see whether it's something we do to show that we're actually using it or if we don't need to do anything with it at all.
There have to be transfers almost, the set, is it? You know, yeah.
So I think, again, if we were ever thinking about dissolving the reserve, my personal call is to our auditors and our attorneys.
Yeah.
If the way I understand liability reserve, you have to have over authorization to unfund it. That would then, and probably within that authorization, could go to the general fund. But my sense is for the transparency perspective, we would probably say we want to lower this fund by such a, such an amount. The surplus that we see from that, we'd like to apply to make the capital reserve to help reduce the tax. Okay, taxer again for what they call Article 7. So when corporations challenge their assessments, this can also apply to homeowners. My sense is we may see quite a few of those, or I should say the assessor will probably see quite a few of those. So again, we, the whole looks at this every year. We look at our Article 7s. We look at what we think the market is doing. Are we going to see a high challenge on the assessment? So really, to some degree, it's discretionary in how we calculate that. You can see we've typically been at about 292. That was a large part because at one point in time, we did have very high concern about Article 7s and people challenging the taxes. We've sort of been obtained that throughout. So capital reserve for buses, again, these are typically the ones that go out, should have voted approval. You can see that for this particular, we actually had two reserves. So authorized in 2010, voter approval in 2010. The term of that had expired, so we went out and the board authorized a renewal of that. Took that to the community who also reauthorized that. It has a particular, when you do that, it has a particular amount that you can go up to for a particular period of time. And see that in 2010, when we actually generated, improved it, we put in $2 million. You see that historically how we've used that over time. 2017, we rolled it into a new reserve and we've used that periodically, we're at about 642 right now. I will, I, I do want to highlight, we did in the current year. Classroom equipment and technology, again, established one in 2013, in 2019. We established another reserve, very similar to what I just shared with the bus and motor vehicle. With a little bit of a caveat. This, I believe, was our 2013 reserve. And you can see we funded it at 1.1 million. We did not fund it again throughout. It expired. But what we missed was it didn't roll into the reserve. So we now have two reserves, essentially the same name differentiated differentiated by the year. So in this particular case, we're maintaining the balance of 500,000. We would continue to use this. You have a certain amount of time to contribute to it. You necessarily don't have a certain amount of time in which you have to use it. And then last year, we funded $300,000 into the new classroom equipment and technology reserve. I think this reserve is going to be very useful in the upcoming years as we develop our budgets, helping offset our one-on-one student initiative and all of the things that Core and his team are required to do. This, the capital reserve for, I call capital projects, this is sort of that building, stage one. Again, we had one in 2014. Fifteen or max, ten years. You can see that we have used this extensively. Remember 2007, 2010, 2013, 2015, 2018, those are all capital projects that we've gone out with over the years and how we've used our reserve to help offset and minimize that global share. Last year, I think, given the conversation about the state of the facilities, I just wanted to go out with a much larger project. We did put a concentrated effort of increasing this. We'll probably be very similar in the upcoming year. Components of a reserve plan. So this is where really things in green are a lot of things of what I've colored, things in, that are sort of things that I'm a little more aggressive on as far as getting board approval, putting together a more formal reserve plan and that sort of the work that's probably going over the next year. So with that, I know I went through it quickly. You guys can come up here and do this next year. I don't have to. All right?
Over. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, certainly. So let's take everything we just spoke about, put to the current year. So for the, on the revenue side, again, I think a lot has already come in. The two largest variables is sales tax. You can see that I'm still estimating 700,000. Historically, we have been closer to 825 to about 900,000. But again, it'd be very interesting to see the holiday and gas tax, sales tax. It'll be interesting to see what, what happens and how that plays out. So as being conservative in that regard. And even state aid is still, those numbers are still fluctuating. I attended a conference that our external auditor put on about closing year end. And he said, by the time, when you look at what they call a confirm for your state aid amounts or what they call an accrual, by the time they do that in June or July till September, when they are closing it, those numbers have a tendency to change. Is it, will it be significant? I don't think so. Sales tax, again, will be a liar's variable. Again, big picture, right now, you can see that we're about 1.8 million, I'm sorry, 1.2 million more than what I projected. And again, sales tax is a large part of that. Don't forget, 280,000 of that is a one-time revenue that we're using for federal stimulus based on the laws that were put in place due to transportation. Any questions on that?
I have one comment. So then I said, gas savings, it can be nothing. The grand scheme of things. Yeah, I mean, that can move the needle.
Our, our external auditor offered jokes. He was expecting to see the gas price go down 18 cents. I don't think he saw it go down at all. So.
Yeah.
On the expense side, again, we're showing about a 1.8 million dollar savings. It will be under budget. So really, where, where is that coming from? My initial thought process right now is I've looked at just some of the numbers. You know, one contractual or certain contractual expenses that we didn't incur. So for instance, private duty nurses was something that we didn't incur budget for. We didn't get it, haven't had a need for. Salaries for the labor shortage, even though, yes, we're spending more in substitutes, not enough to offset not being able to hire individuals specifically in Darren's department. So things that are going to impact this number, one, as we look at year-end encumbrances, what can we currently close? Or what ones do we need to encumber in preparation for the end of the year? And federal stimulus is going to play a large role. So for instance, one line item within our budget where we pay for teachers to cover when they're absent. The budget, I think, was about 25,000. We've spent probably close to 75. So I want to do an amendment for federal stimulus and essentially move that We've spent probably close to 75. So I want to do an amendment for federal stimulus and essentially move that from the general fund to the federal fund, which would reduce the expenditure. So those types of things I'm currently analyzing, which will play a role in what our end of year balance will be. So that being said, based on the information I have at hand right now, I'm projecting a surplus of about 1.1 million dollars. If you were to look down at the bottom of the last page of the fund balance reserves. Again, this is just for illustrative uses. We would potentially be able to replenish our ERS. If we max TRS at 580, that would leave a balance of 640,000 or so to put into the capital project. So again, it's just illustrative. We'll have those conversations later as we get a better feel for what our fund balance will be. Any questions on financial report?
No, that was a very clear indicator. So I appreciate that.
Someone make a motion. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Alright, so the last item, at least for me tonight, is the board to sort of approve what we, what we commonly virtual is the preliminary allocation of fund balance. So again, this is really just so that the auditors have a sense of what the board is thinking for this particular year because ultimately a different board potentially would make the final decision. But this is really giving them an idea of where this board would like to go. Obviously, we go to number four. You know, I very rarely have put in an amount not to exceed $5 million in our capital reserve for projects. Do I think we're going to have $5 million put in that reserve? But if we were, it certainly gives us discretion to use up to that. And that would apply to each of the capital reserves as well. You're not being pulled, held for this, but this is sort of the intent and it's not in any specific order. Again, once the final audit's complete, we'll come back, have conversation with the board as to what the recommendation will be at discussion and then put that into the final draft.
Weird question. Like three people in here might care about. There was a suspension during the pandemic on the A great trip. And I'm looking for guidance on how to get that back.
Mr. Centola actually asked me about that.
Oh, good.
Consideration. So they're considering.
Thank you, Ty.
You want to reverse that, she wanted?
I want to do it again.
Oh, 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 I got especially, I thought a student got stuff. I got to.
No, no, no. That's where my head. No, no, no. It was suspended because of, now we really get to come back. No, it didn't happen this year. No, it didn't happen this year, which is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, that was personal.
That was the appropriate time to ask it. So I guess at this point, meeting evaluation, anything else moving forward? So what we'll do here at this point, we need motion to go into an executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of your employees.